This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, that is, let's see, August 10th, 2020, and it is now 6:10 PM. So the meeting of the Planning Board of the Village of Pittsford. And this is a workshop session to discuss some of our notes and recommendations regarding the Active Transportation Plan. And in particular, this meeting, we're going to be reviewing some draft documents that have summarized some of our previous discussions. And hopefully, we'll revise the documents and forward them along to the Active Transportation Plan Committee for their consideration. We are having a virtual meeting tonight, complying with orders of Governor Cuomo in light of the pandemic of coronavirus. And we are meeting, Village Hall is closed, so we are meeting virtually via this video conference. And there is a link to this video conference access on the Village website that any member of the public can use to join and observe the video conference. So with that said, I will make a motion to open the meeting, noting that all five members of the Planning Board are logged in as to the video conference. And currently, it looks like no members of the public are logged in. So do we have a second?
Second.
How do you vote?
I.
I.
The record show that was unanimous consent among all five Planning Board members to open the meeting. Okay, I have a screen share here, which is a write-up of our notes on the Active Transportation Plan so far. And this is only, they're primarily covering pages, I believe it's 75 to 96, which is the sections that were most relevant to the village. We did not cover some of the background sections and the town-specific sections in our comments. So I worked on typing these up and then handed them off to Susan and Justin Lakegeb. And they worked on revising them and copy editing them. And at this point, just to go over them as a group and see if there's any additional revisions that need to be made before we send them along. Any initial comments from anybody on process here? Are we good?
Good.
Just a quick comment. So I've got a separate document. I'll share that link now so I don't forget. And I'm not sure how many of you are going to have luck clicking onto that. But basically, those are the LWRP policy recommendations that are from Justin's notes on two separate meetings that I combined together. And just did some very minor type editing on there. But you know, let's go over the ATP notes first that Justin just shared. Just wanted to get that out there as the other source that we'll be looking at.
Yep. So that's Document Two. And Document Three, there is this draft document that talks about what are the minimum safe widths for bicyclists and so on, considering some of the various standards documents out there. We have time to get into that. We can, I know most of you haven't had a chance to see that yet. I just emailed that around immediately before the meeting. But if we have time to get into that, that would be, I'd be curious to hear people's thoughts on that. Okay, so Mr. Lakegeb, I have a copy of your document as well. I saved it as a Word document. So if you wanted to do that as a screen share, I can do that.
Okay, great.
Okay. So Joanne and Dave, have you had any chance to look this over?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Pretty much in full. I thought it was really well done.
Obviously, the editor's note will disappear.
Starting from the, just one very brief comment on the Spanish, I think we lost a couple of accents.
Yeah.
The translation here, and I can add those back in. Not sure what the best way is to do that. I don't know who's got that. I can just put it in the...
So what is the source version of the document? Is, did you, I don't know whether Mr. Lakegeb or Ms. Loda worked on it. I think you use Pages, Susan. And Justin, you typically use Google Documents?
Yeah, this is, I think Susan did most of the work on this one. These, the first part here were a couple of recommendations that I had kind of put together and sent over to Susan. And then all subsequent edits are hers. And I have another chance to go back and look through all of them.
Okay.
I know that I lost all the Spanish language accents, but
No big deal.
I was kind of going quicker. So, yeah, I have your original documents, so I can put them back in.
Okay.
But are we all in favor of, I mean, I don't speak Spanish, so I can order a little bit in Spanish. But I'm going to defer to Justin Lakegeb, you know, and just say, if your text does what it does, then I'm all for it.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I, so just to clarify, I had read over this and it didn't sound quite right. I mean, we're basically looking at, the Spanish translation specifically mentions the Civil Rights Act in 1964, whereas the English doesn't. The meaning there is pretty much the same. But the problem with the Spanish translation is that it is said that there's not going to be discrimination if there is federal funding. Whereas in the English, it says regardless of whether or not it gets federal funding, there won't be any discrimination. So that was an important oversight. And so I modified this, and then I also sent it to a native Spanish speaker on our staff who polished up my Spanish. So I think with the accents, it should be good to go. And more
You have very fluent Spanish people on your staff since they live in South America.
Right.
Surprisingly, I was able to read it. I never could have put it together, but I could read it.
Cool.
Okay, so the notes to the trustees are going to start with that comment from the first page after the cover.
Oh, let me scroll back up. Sorry, I sometimes forget that. My screen's being shared. So your question is, let's move on, let's accept this and move on, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'll go to the next page then. Sounds like that was the consensus to accept it and move on. So any comments on this? Do you want me to scroll down a little bit?
I've got my screen here too, just.
So, so Justin Lakegeb suggested language that the LWRP should be considered a complement to the ATP. And I really think that is not quite right. I mean, it's a regulatory document. So the ATP has got to comply with the LWRP. So I thought it was important to include some language from the LWRP and firm that up. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, there's certainly coordinated and the goals are basically the same. Or, but, you know, the LWRP is the, like I said, is the regulating document here.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that. And I didn't intend to make the LWRP subordinate to the ATP. In fact, my intention was the reverse, if anything. So I agree with what you're saying there, Susan. I'm still just parsing out the changed text here.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah. I put in some language from the LWRP introduction.
So thank you, by the way, you two for working on this. And Susan, it sounds like you guys, both of you two have put some decent work in, so thank you very much.
Yeah, no, you know, I'm like the LWRP head cheerleader.
Which is great. I guess, so I get the regulatory part of this. I'm just wondering, you know, so we're saying it's woven, those goals that we agree with are woven throughout the LWRP. The part that I'm still not sure about in this revised text is that, what I wanted to say is that the LWRP has unique and significant content that is not represented in the ATP. I guess that's what I wanted to emphasize there. And I'm not sure if we're saying that in this statement.
And just to be clear, what's in red is what you were hoping that they would add to the ATP?
Well, what's in red is what the, what is in the supplement.
That's in the supplement, okay.
That's already there.
Yeah, that's
That I highlighted, correct?
Okay, then, all right, then, I'm sorry. Let me figure out what I'm actually reading here. Okay, right, so that was already there, which we think is not strong enough, right? And then, I'm sorry, Susan, I think I was reading the wrong thing, thinking it was yours. Okay.
You may want to capitalize town and village.
Yeah.
Minor quibble.
No. Susan, could you explain, so the language you use in the suggested changes to the supplement? Were you thinking to use this language in that paragraph that we were just highlighting some text on to use it in full? Or, and just insert that into the supplement, or to parse it out slightly differently?
I would suggest replacing the red text with the text that's right below it.
Okay. Let me go up and maybe I can fit both of these on the screen here.
I mean, I can certainly add the first two sentences, which is half of that. But I guess it was the last sentence, the LWRP policies underscore active transportation priorities. I think it's the other, I think it should be the other way around.
I think I would agree with you.
What if instead of underscore, we strike that and use identify?
Or include, replace underscore with include?
Yeah. Right? I think include is reasonable.
Okay, so include.
Right? I mean, safety I don't necessarily mind what's in red, other than that underscore part, because you're right, by underscoring, it's kind of giving the ATP priority. And if we just simply restate that it includes priorities, then
Well, so what bugged me about what's in red is that they've just, you know, the LWRP is a big document. And it does, it does a lot more, there are kind of more calls to action than what the ATP has singled out here. And I think calls to action that even, you know, would fall under the category of active transportation, like all the water stuff. So
What if we, okay, what if we were to continue on that statement? The LWRP policies include, some active transportation priorities included in the ATP in addition to others that should be considered priorities? Or something that takes that sentence and just says, and there's other stuff in there too?
I feel like we need to
Or you're writing below, you could simply, you could almost strike that sentence entirely and then continue on with what you wrote.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yes, I agree.
Don't strike the red, maybe just strike that one sentence.
Well,
The last sentence, yeah.
So you can replace underscore with includes, or maybe change it slightly. The other one, the second, another sentence is also bad. It says, improving safety infrastructure and access for pedestrians and bicyclists. This is more of this really soft language. It's not guidance, it's not recommendations, it's mandatory. So you can just replace this whole thing and say mandated by the LWRP.
Uh, yes, so how about that last sentence is rewritten to be, the LWRP policies include active transportation priorities that improve safety, infrastructure, access for pedestrians and bicyclists that is required to be in compliance with the LWRP. To be in compliance, period.
I still think that's a very narrow focus, that's missing a lot of, it's missing, you know, water. Missing, it's missing the waterfront.
Well, you are right about that. So this, so that may have been a true statement, but it may have not gone far enough.
Yeah, right, right.
So replace that last sentence with what Susan wrote, the suggested changes, the whole thing. I like it.
All right, so now we're striking potentially the last two sentences and replacing them with what Susan wrote.
I mean, these are our recommendations. So, you know, I think if we're not going to be strong about this, I think the ATP is just going to, you know, continue to be watered down.
Yeah, I agree with this, with what you're saying. Personally, I think this is the most important recommendation of all of them that we're making.
Yeah.
Which is why I don't mind dwelling on it a little bit. I'd be okay with striking those last couple of sentences and adding in Susan's text. I guess, to me, the only thing that is missing there is, as a reader, if I read that revision, supposing we merge those two together, is it clear that the ATP doesn't include a bunch of great stuff that's in the LWRP? And I don't know if we're making that point clearly enough, because I would think, as a naive reader, I go to the ATP and that's got everything that I need to know about active transportation and human-powered mobility, whereas that's not the case at all.
Well, we don't know where it's going to end up. So I think that's a separate discussion. So whether it complies or not with the LWRP is a separate discussion from saying it needs to, you know, active transportation is part of the LWRP.
Yeah, I guess I'm maybe jumping ahead there. I agree, we could separate those things. I guess I was jumping ahead of my mind and saying, well, you know, they're not going to go back and modify all these recommendations. There are still going to be pieces that are missing. So I'd like to make it clear here that the LWRP is still binding and it still needs to be read.
Right. All right, so then what if, coming back to the LWRP policies, what if one were to say the LWRP policies include active transportation priorities not included? Or, no, requirements, skip priorities, requirements. The LWRP policies include active transportation requirements that are not included in the Active Transportation Plan. Right? And just leave it at that, and then go on to what Susan wrote.
Sure, sure, that are not entirely incorporated in the Active Transportation Plan or something like that. And we could even be more specific and say, you know, not included in the first draft of, in the text of the Active Transportation Plan outside of the amendments or something, if we wanted to leave space for the amendments to include a bunch of this stuff.
Right.
Just revise here as much as you, so let's just revise this on the fly. So we're talking about just deleting these last two sentences, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, Justin, we're changing the second to last sentence to the LWRP policies include active transportation.
Say requirements.
Requirements that are not included in the first draft of the ATP.
Okay.
All right.
Well, do we want to say first draft, because this may actually make it into the final draft? So wouldn't we say, the LWRP policies include active transportation requirements that are not referenced in the ATP? Or that are not referenced in this document?
Yeah, this is actually, this was their attempt to recognize the LWRP, that's the supplement.
Right, so it's part of the document. So I think it should end with include active transportation requirements that are not included in this document.
I think the way that Justin just put it there is okay too, because that's kind of what I'm trying to get across. We don't know what the amendments are going to look like once they adopt this thing. So all we can really say is it's not in the 2019 ATP.
Yeah.
Sure.
Or 2019 ATP or 2020 supplement.
And then draft one.
I don't think they're going to actually amend. I'm thinking here. Well, I think that's a separate statement that for us to make is that the, what's before us is, like you said, we don't know how they're going to change it. So I think first of all, we send the comments along, and then we see how they change it, and then we decide if it's good enough. I think that's how it kind of has to go. If we're going to make a statement that was currently before the Planning Board, needs changes, that's a good statement to make as well. But making that statement before we have the public hearing is also another thing. It doesn't sound good to me.
Agreed.
So where did that leave us, Justin Bleedstra?
What do you want to do with this highlighted sentence here that talks about improving safety? Let's, so I guess where I'm at is, let's not say anything yet, whether, we could say the 2019 version did not include LWRP requirements, but saying everything doesn't, I think is a little presumptuous at this time.
Okay.
Would one take that last sentence, and instead of saying the policy guidance recommendations of the LWRP, just simply say the LWRP policies? Oh, no, no, at the very end.
What, very end of what?
That sentence. So strike the policy guidance and recommendations of the LWRP, and instead say is woven throughout the LWRP policies.
I'm okay with that.
Nope.
No.
But it doesn't go far enough.
Yeah, I thought we were striking that sentence.
All right, let's strike it.
So for Susan's comment of it not including, you know, water, active transportation on the water, it seems to be not quite good enough. They're not just walking sidewalks and bicyclists. So we're striking that.
Yep.
And So we'll make this black now that we're okay with that. I suspect this is two different fonts. Of course, okay. That's, Susan, you'll be all over that, right?
Little bit.
Okay, so is this how we want it? And then, and then includes the rest of this? Does anyone have any other changes?
Could you identify, oh, I'm sorry, I see where the quotes are coming from right now, the LWRP, nevermind.
Yeah. The last sentence of the new text seems to be a little bit redundant now with the last sentence of the first paragraph. So we're saying that the LWRP goes beyond the ATP 2019 version. And then we're just saying at the end, it kind of weakens that statement, it says it aligns with it. I wonder if we could just kind of combine those two, you know, take the last sentence and say that further LWRP policies align with active transportation priorities in a way that goes beyond the ATP 2019 draft or something by promoting. If we said that there, then maybe we don't even need the last sentence, the first paragraph.
What about
Strong statement.
So I like, I like the first, I like trying to keep them separate. What if we said instead, further LWRP policies, which align with active transportation priorities, must be considered separately? Or something to that effect? Where you, you use that second part to identify the need for them to look at it separately than the ATP? And then you use the first part to just simply say that, you know, there's some stuff over there. And then the second, the second line is making sure they go look at it.
I'm not sure I like the word which in here, but
Right.
I mean, I'm okay with just last sentence as it is. It sounds like some other people had a few other criticisms they want to make or wording changes. So if someone wants, I guess I'm not, I'm not quite sure how to improve it.
I think we're making the right point here. I think it's, I'm probably just being too nitpicky. I think it gets across the right message at this point.
Yeah, I wanted to be very specific about connectivity to the waterfront. And the traffic calming measures, I mean, but what, so Justin Bleedstra, why don't you glom those two together? And I don't know if you want to keep them as separate paragraphs, maybe that's a good idea. And then we can, you know, let that sit and take a look at it after we've gone through other stuff.
The other thing I was going to say, one additional, we could add an additional sentence is improving connectivity to waterfront areas is a key component that has been omitted from the January 2019 Active Transportation Plan.
Sure.
I can type that in here. I'll type it in, you guys, tell me if you want to revise it.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine. I guess when, when I was saying that I thought the LWRP was complimentary to this, it's kind of a way of saying that as well, while allowing the ATP committee members to save face, you know, it's not that they omitted it or forgot about it. It's just they didn't go there because this is already done well in another document. But I think there are a lot of ways to express that, and I'm fine with this too.
So do you want to include this last sentence or no?
Could you read it, Justin? It's really small.
Okay, promoting connectivity to the waterfront areas is a key component of LWRP that is omitted from the January 2019 Active Transportation Plan.
I wouldn't say omitted. It's not like they, you know, they took something out. Maybe say that, you know, is, is missing.
Not considered, that is not considered in the 2019.
Not, not considered, yeah.
And that's fine. It's passive, but intentionally, so I
Right, right.
Now, this is where, when we put this before the boards, are they going to look at that and take offense? And might they then start to rework the whole thing? I mean, I'd much rather have them take this, copy and paste it, and say, okay, we're replacing I mean, I'd much rather have them take this, copy and paste it and say, okay, we're replacing paragraph X in the current amendment with this, right? And if they have to go in and reword it and do additional work, the likelihood of that may be lower. Is there a way to say that again, just a little bit softer? Because I think they probably considered it to some extent and maybe they just hit some roadblocks. So what if, go ahead.
You know, I've, I've talked to, you know, a couple of people who are on it. They, they didn't read it. You know, this was, this was a miss. So, you know, and this gives them a heads up, I think, to our, you know, to our consistency review.
Right.
Plus, there are two people on the committee who have, who wrote the LWRP.
Right.
And, you know, and other people who have, you know, done LWRP reviews. So I'm digging in on this one. You know, democracy rules, but I think it was.
So I respect that. What if we just entered sufficiently for something before addressed? So the LWRP that is not sufficiently addressed.
They don't even, they don't use the word LWRP a single time.
All right, all right. I'm going to give it fucking play.
Right. They're not going to be soft.
They don't say the Erie Canal like once.
Yeah. All right. Do we want, okay, so now that, let's say we're done here. Do we want to take and tell them that on page 104 of the ATP and 2020 supplement, page 11 reference replace A with B? Or do we want to let them go find where this should be?
It's referenced. It's on, it's on there.
Right here is, it says it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's page 11.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'm good with everything.
All right, that's.
And then in terms of the and then in terms of this, we have this last sentence that says that was not inside here. So then they can, if they want to address it in the supplement, then they say this will be addressed in the supplement.
This is the supplement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the supplement to the supplement.
Okay. All right. I'll have this text. I'll forward it on to Susan.
I'm good with it. I'm good.
I'll just send it to you right now. I'll just send it to your stuff in spurts if you want. Or do you want me to just compile everything?
No, that's good. That's all right. However.
Okay, so that's good. Page 44 under opportunities.
Sorry, Justin, while you're editing this, if you want to copy and paste the Spanish text in the sidebar, that should have the accents that transfer over, maybe.
I think that's beyond my, what I can do quickly right now.
Okay, Norris.
I don't know where, where that is. Is that in your document?
No, it's just in the chat sidebar of go to meeting. If you click on the message bubble. Yeah, it's got all sorts of stuff.
It didn't open that.
No, it really doesn't have any.
Wow. Can't read that. Oh gee.
All right, here is what Susan is getting.
Okay.
I'm in on this, but this is what you wanted, right?
Uh huh.
You got, I see it has some of the, the stuff in there. I'm making sure the spacing is right, but.
That's good.
And it's because I can't stand three fonts in one document.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
I have a question for you. Existing ATP, page 11, existing policies.
That's the supplement.
Yeah, okay. So do we want to reference that's page three of the supplement? Or no? Doesn't matter. Page 11 is fine. Okay, never mind. It's, it's.
I just use, I just use the supplements pagination.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so page 44. Supplement, page 78.
This, I believe, goes back to the ATP. Not, are you looking at page 40, page 44?
Yeah. So, so just as we think about how we related this to them, so now the, the next section says page 44 under opportunities. That's actually page 44 of the master document, not page 44 of the supplement.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Basically, under here, you're going to have some text that says, following our comments on the January 2019 Active Transportation Plan document.
Right.
Right. Yeah. So as we use the page pagination, just make sure they know if we're doing it in the supplement or the master doc.
Got it.
So we need a little section header there. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I agree with that comment on page 44. That sounds good to me. What, what's the reference though there to supplement page 78?
I think they included it. So some of the things they, that we said in page 78, this is in the supplement, they do talk about a traffic signal at State Street and Chene Place.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
So I decided, you know, unless things were practically word for word, I would, I would keep our notes, you know, pretty, pretty whole.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, so how are we connecting the Monroe Ave and Main Street intersection to the State Street-Chene Place intersection? Why are they, right? Because page 78 of the supplement is talking about State Street-Chene Place.
Right. This is, so these are, these are our notes. And we're talking about the four-corner intersection, but.
Improving pedestrian spa, oh, I see what they're saying. Okay. You know what it is? It would be under page 44, we could add that opportunity. And in the supplement, it would, it's referenced on page 78, that pagination, that they're inserting another one into the improving pedestrian space. I suspect that's where they could also add this. Okay.
Right. So again, I, if they, if the supplement addresses something that, that coincides with our notes, I wanted to leave our notes, I wanted to leave our notes in.
Yep.
So I'll take that supplement, page 78, out, I guess.
Okay. Well, hold on. First of all, the stuff on page 44, it was based on community input at these information sessions. So amending that doesn't really make sense. So that's something that happened as community input. That's not actually part of recommendations. This is just background.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I'll take it out then. I think we have it somewhere else.
Yeah, I think this, we could take this somewhere.
Yeah.
Yep. So what if we just focused on page 78? And under improving, would it be under improving pedestrian space or curb improvements?
I'm pretty sure it's in there somewhere.
What, the Monroe Ave crossing?
All right. No, getting rid of, of the rate turn lanes.
Right.
The last paragraph on page 78 talks about it. They're keeping it in mind for the future.
Well, they're saying remove all right on red turning movements, but not the lanes. So we could extend that. We could change turning movements and lanes.
Right.
Set and lanes there.
Yeah.
Well, I think all you need to do is just say revise page 78. Get rid of discussion of supplement.
Sure.
To say, you know, remove all turning lanes at four corners intersection Monroe Avenue and Main Street in the village.
Right. So, so remove page 44 under opportunities?
Yeah.
Yep. And just say ATP page 78.
Right.
Yep.
Yep. And by doing that, we can get rid of the supplement page 78 reference, too.
So I think this is what we're talking about doing. I don't know if you guys can read this.
Yep. Well done.
Now, on page 78, where would that go? Would it be a number 12 under signalization? Or would it be an additional? Where would we put that recommendation?
Number 12 is the recommendation to have stoplights at State Street and Chene Place.
All right. So then this would be a number 13?
And it would replace that, that final paragraph, maybe.
Would it replace, well, I think this would be a separate item.
We could say under signalization, we can add this. It already says the prohibition of all right turning movement is another consideration.
Exactly.
So just add it to remove all turning lanes.
Yeah, just add it, add, add it. Yeah. Right.
And, and that particular statement, the prohibition of all right on red turning, that is a comment that would be throughout the entire village.
Yeah, that looks broader.
This recommendation is specific to four corners. And I, I think if we took this little comment and we suggested it to be a number 13, for example.
Right. And, and still leave that last paragraph. You're right.
Leave the last paragraph.
Yeah.
That's good.
Because by numbering it, it's a specific recommendation.
Right.
And then we don't have to worry about the future consideration and evaluation and all that other stuff. And by giving it a 13 number, we just drop it in a supplemental, we're done.
Yep.
So number 12 is not there because number 12 is on the supplemental of the supplemental.
Okay.
I think that's good.
All right.
Yeah.
Next thing is, we had page 51 here.
Page 51.
Is this from the supplemental?
No, 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 from the plan.
So maybe, so sorry, this should precede page 78, right?
Yeah. Well, you have to reorder them. You obviously want them in order. But I'm fine with this comment.
Yep. Yeah, we had, we talked a lot about that. Yep.
Question is, where? So that page 51 reference, that's in the supplement, right?
No, that's in the main ATP. And that's about, a section about missing sidewalks. So I'm saying when you do add sidewalks, and yeah, that's something that we had discussed as a group. And I just figured it might be wedged in there.
Yep.
Yep, got it. I agree.
Sorry, I was trying to open.
Okay, so this is where this is where we want to reorder them a little bit, obviously.
Yeah.
But so this, this sidewalk gap on page 51 will come before our page 78 or whatever it was.
Absolutely.
Yep. Yeah, that's good. They can drop that in wherever they want.
Right. And then, and then page 74, 76, those will precede page 78 as well.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, page 75.
And we had talked about, you know, this is one that we talked about in our meetings before. And I didn't realize initially that it actually said to do this in the LWRP. So it's a good place to give us some credit there.
Yeah. Should we add improved bicycle and pedestrian safety and connectivity?
Sure.
Pedestrian safety and connectivity. Safety is a big thing. I drive, what if I drive down towards the dairy, from, at least from my end of the village, I guess we're all on this end of the village, on the south end. There's always cars flying past while pedestrians are training across the road or bicyclists are trying to cross the road. People rarely stop. Someone stops one direction, doesn't stop the other direction. It really is not good. It's a very heavily crossed section. Both ends of this are.
Right, right.
So I agree with adding safety.
Right. And you know, there, depending on what you guys think, but you know, the, the bridges are the State Street and, and North Main. Those are the main thoroughfares to get to the canal path. And, and that's what most of that traffic, most of that, you know, pedestrian and bike traffic is doing, is getting, getting to the canal path. And I, you know, I, I just think it should be stated that, you know, one of the dynamics of village traffic is to get to the canal path. And, you know, and there are these two bridges that are just so unsafe, you know, you know, with, for people, for people to do that. It would have been good if they, they had some study that really, you know, said, you know, where are people going on, on bikes and taking a walk?
I think that was something else in the LWRP is they recommended a traffic study for the, for the end of Chene Place to see what, what to do.
Right. But anyway. But any, anyway.
You know, we talked about, um, implementing crosswalks that are visually and texturally different from the roadway.
I, I think that's somewhere.
I didn't find it.
Um.
But anyway, it talks about, um, all of that stuff and leaves out the texture part in that first paragraph on page 75.
Right. Joanne, a little further down in this, um, there are like two page 78 comments, and one says, uh, provide, um, public visual act, oh no, sorry. Forget that, that wasn't.
Was in our comments on the LWRP is where we commented on this.
Yep, yep, that's right.
I think that's the document number two.
Yeah.
Okay, let me go back here. So, we covered this one here. We covered this one, next one here. Stoplights at each end of shame place. Everyone's been with that. Next one, page 76. Any comments on this one? Replace or move larger electrical boxes from head height at Southern Jefferson.
Seems to make sense to me. Sure.
Okay, now, next one here. How do I get this stupid bar to go away?
Justin Leester, I think this is yours, isn't it?
Document here?
No, this, this comment on, uh,
The boxes?
No, the next one.
78?
Yeah. So creating a moment when all the lights are red.
Is this also, is there a separate comment, uh, saying that, oh, we, we looked at this, the, um, beg buttons? We had talked about removing those for something that just changes it automatically, and that's already addressed in the ATP.
Susan, here's a typo, this is corners, it should say corners.
Oh. Thank you.
So this number 78, again, for signalization, this should be number 14, so somehow amended. To the extent that we include this exact language, it doesn't matter, but I would say, uh, like we did with number 13, say number 14. And then whatever we decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is where they had said on page, um, I guess those village comments again on page 42. Provide advanced pedestrian crossing technology, but it doesn't say what that technology should do. Add a robot to do something.
Okay, well, the first comment here, um, what changes are we making to this?
We're adding it. Oh, I don't know what changes we're making.
Other than changing corners to corners.
Oh, uh, instead of number 78, keep it at page 78, but then put, uh, add number 13 or number 14.
14.
Okay, so say page 78, um, add number 14.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't necessarily know if we need the second sentence. It may or may not be duplicative of other challenges that have been expressed previously in the document. I, I agree with it. I just don't know if we need to say it again.
So it is difficult to, yeah, that could be omitted, I don't think it.
Mm-hmm.
Just to clean it up and make it very like straightforward and a little tighter, like maybe some of the other ones.
I'm good.
You know, I'm, as I'm looking back at this now, I'm not sure where it does say, uh, eliminate beg buttons. I think the advanced pedestrian crossing technology is one of the community recommendations, and it's not at all clear what that would do. Do they say remove beg buttons? They, I, I think we discussed that, right? And. There's no term beg button in the whole ATP. Do they call them something else? Advanced, there's only two instances, provide advanced pedestrian crossing technology. Okay, that's the community thing that you were talking about. Yeah. And that's it. No. That's kind of a, I feel like that's sort of a big one. You know, it does seem to be a, a standard, um, best practice for active transportation where you have, you don't have the need to push the buttons. That's become really clear, especially during the pandemic, when you've got to find an article of clothing to push the button with. But even without that, you know, it's like, you really just want stuff to favor pedestrians rather than deferring to traffic. Well, so either beg buttons or something that's automatic when you come up to the crosswalk, or at least a four-way stop like what we're referencing here. Is there a way to, uh, recommend either here? Yeah, I think you could.
There's a, um, yeah, revision is document here.
Yeah, I see the revision. What if, uh, add number 13 was enhance pedestrian safety at Main Street and State Street, either through the installation of advanced crossing technology? Or, uh, changing all signaling to, uh, all red all the time or something like that. I mean, that's not good English, but. What if you gave an option of either or here?
Well, I think we want, and in the, one of the comments, and we just barely remember when we discussed this, we discussed it a while ago, is creating gaps in traffic is needed so that crosswalks down the road to work. So signaling technology there wouldn't address that.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
So, oh, this sentence we're gonna delete, correct? We're gonna delete this sentence right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and we could just say, um, eliminate buttons, the requirement to press buttons to, um, you know, to use the crosswalks. I don't know what the term for that is.
Honestly, if you have signaling at Four Corners, it's all red all the time, then you don't even need the button.
That's right, it's just automatic.
Yeah, so you, you could just leave it like it is. There's a Strong Towns article on this one about removing beg buttons. What do they, what's the term they use? I think Renee has even mentioned this in meetings too in the past, so it's something that I'm surprised is left out of the ATP. I feel like it should be there somewhere. Pedestrian signal. Hey.
Is this sentence okay or is it super fluid?
Um, I, I don't think we need it, actually. And they're not really beg buttons. They don't alter the signaling at all. They just, right.
I don't quite know how it works. So I, I don't know if it makes a difference whether I push them or not.
You know what I think it does? I think it takes away the right on reds, or I think it, excuse me.
No.
Now, the only thing it does is when you push that button, the next time the light turns, then you get a walk, don't walk sign. If you don't push the button and the light turns, then you don't get a walk sign.
That's right, creates the gap, creates the gap.
No, there's no gap. It just, it just lights up the walk, you know, you have 25 seconds. It just signals that sign to come on, otherwise it doesn't come on.
Right.
Yeah, it would be neat if the beg button, if there were one.
I asked for that in the beginning, the DOT said no.
It'd red while that was going.
Yeah.
Right. Well. Well, I'm okay without that line there, um.
So this highlighted sentence, I'll delete it?
Yeah, I think we just tell them to have it all red all the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Make the car just press a button to make it go green. We'll see what the.
Alright, so that's that.
Yeah, we're drunk with power here.
Hey, it says where pedestrians and cars conflict, we have to favor pedestrians.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About pedestrians and DOT?
Fun the DOT.
Yeah.
I'm joking, but, um. Okay, so any other changes to this one?
No, I just want to, could I go back to the other one for just a second? On that same document you were just on, go up to where we added the word safety?
Yeah, let me figure out where.
Um, it's, uh, page 75, Justin.
Yeah. It's your amended document. Scroll up just a little bit, yeah, okay, you're right there. This is recommended in the LWRP and would improve, uh, by adding stoplights, are you improving connectivity? Meaning, can we just focus on the safety aspect? Does it actually enhance connectivity?
Well, it would allow pedestrians and bicycles to get to the canal.
Right.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it, right now, it's a bit, it's a bit of work to get there.
I, yeah, I guess by having the stoplights, connectivity enhancement is increased, I guess.
Yeah, because I think people will feel safer, you know, about the attempt.
Okay, sounds good. So now we're on, um, the next 78.
Yeah.
Place number nine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about this for a while. The plan is much better fleshed out in the comp plan, so there's no reason to do an insufficient job but describing it here.
Yeah.
Yep. I agree. So we added the number 79 now, and do we want to drop and paste that page 78 into the document, Justin, that you're sending to Susan, or no?
Um, which one?
That one right there, the page 78, replace recommendation number nine.
That's already in the document. I'm sending changes to this.
Okay. So Susan, just take note that it's possible that there's things we want to submit that won't be in the amended doc that Justin's gonna send you afterward.
So this document is just gonna be changes, when I'm sending her, it just changed.
Just things that are getting changed, yeah.
Yes.
Right, if it's not being changed, it stays in, okay. All right. Moving on.
If you want me to paint, copy and paste existing ones in here, I could do that, but that's just extra work.
No, let's.
It's better done offline.
Yeah, let's, let's keep going.
Okay, I, you know, this seems straightforward. Uh, so then the next one is the wider sidewalks on the bridge.
Yeah, and that's tied into number 80 as well. See, I want to put both of those on the screen, because there's a, a part missing in the ATP. They have, um, the, the center line is, um, they, they had a turning lane there for some reason. If you look at the Google satellite view, it's hash marked in the, in the middle of the bridge. So if you get rid of that, then you've got some more room for the sidewalks.
Right.
Exactly.
I think Bob said the DOT is insisting on the turning lane.
Yeah, well, I think we're, we're trying, we're, uh, we're, we're gonna beat them up with LWRP.
Good.
Let's try.
Let's try, exactly. We don't need to be soft. We get to interpret it, not them. I'm not sure that this is, they're going to, uh, be very willing to work with us, but we'll see.
Don't know until you ask.
Exactly.
But, you know, this, this just, this creates a public record of what the community wants. And at some point, you know, maybe we'll have the opportunity to, um, talk to an authority who will recognize us.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, then we have this on record.
The squeaky wheel gets the grease. A lot of communities probably aren't complaining about this stuff, and if we say there's safety issue and then there's an accident, I think the DOT is not gonna look very good.
I know.
Yeah, well, the other thing with the DOT is, um, you just ask them, hey, where in your requirements does it state it needs to be a turning lane? And when they can't point it out, then, um, you know, it's something they're asking for that the community doesn't want, so why are they doing it?
Right.
And we have a demonstrated accident that already occurred because of such a thing.
Right.
That's right.
Is there a photograph of that? Couldn't we, you know, include that?
We could at least include it in a, um, you know, maybe the planning board could issue a, a letter to the DOT and include a reference to that issue and what the community wants as a follow-up.
Right.
Also tell the DOT, we can invite them to attend a meeting, and to get here, they have to make a left turn at the end of the bridge.
Okay, let's go. Where are?
Alright, so any changes to this on page 79 and 80? And maybe bridge doesn't need to be capitalized, maybe it needs to be bridges. So, um, just to discuss it, I took a look at the, uh, well, two of the three bridges today. We know the one in North Main Street is too narrow. So whatever the, the sidewalks are, they need to be wider. Uh, the one on State Street, which is at the other end of shame place, um, that one actually does have seven to eight foot wide sidewalks. Um, and I think there's actually room to expand that to 10 feet, because there's a gap of, say, three feet between the edge of the sidewalk and the stripe of the road.
Wouldn't you want that for a bicycle lane?
Well, if it's 10 feet wide, you can use the sidewalk for both bicycles and pedestrians.
Oh.
Which is my thinking.
Yeah, I think we should encourage bicyclists to, where we can, not to ride on the sidewalk.
Oh, you, so you, you, you would not, um, put them on the, um, on the road. You prefer them on the road than the sidewalk?
Yes.
I think bicycle commuters might prefer the road as well.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's very little room to work with. If they put a bike lane in, we're gonna get a smaller sidewalk.
What, um, so having gone across that with the kids, uh, this weekend, if the bike lane was in the road and the paths for the cars were narrower, I would be effectively closer in the road, right? Than I would be if I tried to stay up on the sidewalk, meaning I, I would prefer with a family to have a curb. Right? Even on my bike, going over, if it's a very narrow path. If I, if it feels like it's a funneling type thing, I'd almost rather, what if there is some way to put a railing? If I, if it feels like it's a funneling type thing, I'd almost rather, what if there is some way to put a railing up, like on the inside? And you had a walking path, and then on the outside edge, you had a bike path, or there's some way by which you could curb out a bike lane away from a, um, car lane?
Hmm, uh, color, some visual cues. Paint.
Pull up some of these pictures.
Bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
This is the bridge in question. So, this, this is the State Street Bridge, so this is about a seven to eight foot wide sidewalk here, depending on the section you're in, and then there's a short gap, um, to the lane marker. There is a standard double lane here, without the hash marks or turning lane in it, and then I believe on the other side here, it's actually a pretty narrow distance from curb to the white line. So, the, this side here, which is heading, this is heading towards the post office, whatever direction that is.
Interestingly, it looks like they have a rumble strip of some sort between the white line and the curb, huh?
Yeah, that might make a little bit of noise. But anyway, I don't think this is something you're gonna desire to ride a bicycle on, um, it's not, this might be three feet wide, but there's, what I said is there's no room to work with, you want bike lanes, you gotta make the sidewalk narrower. Um, or you can make the sidewalk wider and make the drivelines narrower in some way or another, so those are really all you have to work with, I, I don't know if, um, making this, if, there's no big section in the center of the road to take space from on this bridge, is what I'm trying to point out.
DOT would really not like us if we made it into a one-lane bridge.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you took, if you took away a little, uh, of the road and, and made a bike lane where the, the white stripe is in the curb? Riding a bike on that, I'm already nervous enough just crossing on the, the sidewalk, because it, it feels like it's a funneling system, so, something should be designed there for the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists at the same time, I don't necessarily know if we have to come up with it.
You know, how about if you took the curb out and kind of made a smoother transition before, between the, uh, the sidewalk itself and the, the curb? Because I, I agree with you, I think that curb, you can just see yourself hitting it and, you know, going into traffic, but maybe if it was a smoother, like a, uh, yeah. A.
Well, I, I think the other thing is this separates cars from pedestrians, if it's icy and the car starts sliding, it'll keep them from jumping up on the sidewalk.
Yes, and so, you're seeing more and more winter bicyclists?
Yeah.
And if you had a curb that was at the farthest width from the edges you could get, then within that space, you could allow, you could stripe it for bikes and pedestrians? But you'd have a curb that is where the white stripe is, or maybe even a little to the left? And to your point, Susan, you could even get rid of the sidewalk. You like have it all be lower other than this one little curb? Or all raised, I, almost like the idea of having it all be lower. Maybe not, but.
But. Let me throw another idea at you guys, here is spinning around 180 degrees from the end of the bridge, looking towards, uh, Chase Bank, and this would be walking towards Four Corners here. So, this is, um, again, so standing at the bout, both of these are like from the intersection with Bouton Avenue. Um, we're talking about possibly expanding the Bike Boulevard to connect all the way up over the bridge? It seems like there is a gap over here, but there's room to make a much wider sidewalk if someone wanted to do that. And maybe it could be used, well, I don't know about moving the telephone poles, that might not work, but I'm just throwing it out as an idea. Could, uh, could we have a mixed path that goes across the bridge and further towards, um, Four Corners and the Village?
Bury the wires, you got the space to work with, and it'll look nicer.
Yeah.
There you go, bury the wires, that's a good idea. Okay, anyway, that's just something to think about. Um, I have a picture of the other bridge. Okay, so this is the one on Monroe Avenue. Um, so this one has a completely separate sidewalk for the pedestrians to use, and then there's hash marks in the middle of the road, I don't know how wide that is. And I believe this is a three to four foot, um, striped path on the side, and I'm sure, Dave, you're not riding a bike with your kids, uh, in that. Um, that's not really safe for bicyclists, unless they're willing to narrow that hash section in the middle. And I'm sure they're gonna tell us they can't have it, but they don't have it on the other bridge, uh, so, the other bridge is just a, you know, like an 18 inch wide hash mark, and this one is a 12 foot wide hash mark. So, this sidewalk here is approximately six feet wide, so it's actually a little wider than a normal sidewalk, which makes sense if you have railings.
Question for you, could they design the bridge in a way where the trusses are the width of the vehicle transportation? And then like this, they created a wide enough path on either side for our little bobcats to go over in the winter? And to create a bike lane and to create a walking pedestrian lane?
Yeah, I mean, that's option, but we know rebuilding bridges is not cheap, so.
All right, so we're, we're working with what we have then, and in which case, going back to the original picture of, uh, crossing.
So that's this one, I'll, I'll go back here, I'll move this out of the way, you wanna see them again, let me know, this is this bridge.
Right, so if we assume the width of the bridge is the width of the bridge, and we're gonna work with what's inside of it? I wouldn't mind having some sort of railing that delineates between the crossing and the bike paths. It might not look all that great, may, so maybe it's just really good striking, and we leave it at that, but again, I, I don't know if we have to come up with it as much as we have to just state more attention to detail here.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with you, because we don't know, I don't know what the plan is, if they're gonna rebuild the bridge completely, and I think most of these are like 50-year bridges, probably more than 50 years old? Then, um, and they're, have a blank slate, then there's lots they can do, if they're gonna retrofit this, then that's a whole different matter.
That's right. So I think if we go back to your page 79 and 80, and you say wider sidewalks on the bridge are needed? We could instead say, well, I mean sidewalks doesn't imply raised, but I guess it does, you could say wider pathways on the bridges are needed. I mean, it, it doesn't matter, I mean, you sidewalks, it could end up being a sidewalk or something different, uh, but I think I like how it's stated as I read through it again here. Yeah. There's only, there's a typo at the last sentence of the first paragraph.
So, throw before?
Yeah.
Oh, one of my classic mistakes.
But. Yeah, I, I like both of these, and I think it draws attention to the fact that they didn't pay enough attention to the bridges, and we're being fairly descriptive in what we want.
Right. You know what? Uh, one thing I just noticed, since we came down so hard on the use of consider? Let's just take that consider out, and just start with design these. Yeah. Right, good.
Is suggestion as strong as recommendation?
Well, I think this one is, um, there's two options, have a sidewalk and a bike lane, or, I actually think it was better before, let me undo what I did. Uh, so, you could have a bike path and a sidewalk, or you could have just a mixed-use path.
Yeah. It's an either-or, you're. Uh, let's see, well, going back to Susan's point though, for this page 79 one, we're pretty much telling them to do a wide sidewalk.
Right.
I think you can get rid of consider, if we end up getting an eight-foot wide sidewalk on those bridges, I'll be thrilled, even if it's not like perfect.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, for the page 79 comment, I, I would get rid of consider and just put, design these to be mixed-use for pedestrians and bicyclists.
I'm good with that.
Sidewalks are suggested, yep, so then design, sure. That's good, that's good, yeah, the other one. Yeah, design. Bridges.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Right.
Yep, good. Very good.
Yep, and then page 80, the North Main Street eliminates center lane, yeah.
See, there is currently. Uh, I don't think any of the bridges can be safely crossed with the bicycle. But the North Main one, uh, North Main Street one is in particular.
Yeah, none of those bridges can you have a bicyclist on the sidewalk and a pedestrian? And you basically just have to stop and get off your bike.
Right.
Because you can't be in the road, there's not enough space, it's not marked.
Yep.
Unless you're flying like a car.
And this was for, any other changes to this?
Oh, next.
No, that's good.
Is the text big enough for you to read, Susan? I, well, I have it at 180% here. Then I moved it out of the way. I think you probably have a fairly small screen, I assume, Susan. On your lap, yeah, you do have a pretty small laptop screen, right? You have a 13-inch laptop?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow, you might be able to zoom in on the screen too, Susan, I can do that here, might be a plus button, okay.
Yeah, in the go-to meeting, it shrinks down the viewable area, and, you know. I'm not sure if DOT is the right term here. I think it's ASCO.
Are there any bike lanes on that bridge?
I don't think there are any bike lanes on the bridge, no.
I even reference that they exist. Right, eliminate the center lane on North Main Street Bridge, increase the width of the bridge sidewalks.
And then, um, accommodate bicycles.
Right.
Yeah, and cut and paste the same thing you did on the, no, one before.
Right, to say accommodate bicycles according to NACTO standards.
Now, why for this page 80 are we uniquely different than we were for the page 79 comment?
I believe page 80 has the image of what they're doing.
Yes, that's correct. Oh, all right, so this is relative to an image, okay, let me go to that image. Eliminate the center lane on North Main Street Bridge. Oh yeah, why is there, that is the funkiest conceptual design ever, that makes no sense, all right, that's why that's there. Uh, all right, so eliminate the center lane and no cars, uh, increase the width of bridge sidewalks, accommodate bicycles on the bridge, ensure bicycle lane width approaching the bridge. Yeah, what is that turning lane even for?
Park.
What is? Where are you going with that?
They're going to the meeting we're gonna have with the DOT.
Yeah. You're in that left-hand turning lane until you get to the hotel. Actually, no, you can't even do that, all you can do is turn onto the Erie Canal.
Exactly, you turn into the park.
Yeah, either you're turning onto the canal to, to go west, or you're turning into the port of Pittsburgh, so that, that's for, uh, yeah, wow. Let that be on.
That meeting, we, we had a good chuckle over that already, I'm glad you enjoy it too.
Okay, good.
Okay, so here's how I rewrote this one, um, eliminate the center lane on the North Main Street Bridge, increase the width of bridge sidewalks, um. And so accommodate bicycles on the bridge, and ensure bicycle lane width approaching the bridge, uh, comply with NACTO, whatever, bike lane standards, so, and we don't want three-foot wide bicycle lanes, just because that happens to be the width of the street. Because no one's gonna use them, they're right on the sidewalks.
Yeah. Okay. In something like this, is it appropriate to, to write like a commentary field that references, are we gonna have like a cover letter that references the importance of these things? Like, for example, this is just straight up wrong, I mean, you, you can't let this fly. When we put it like this, if they read that, uh, all right, they may go to it, they may look at it, they may realize the importance of it, but how do we draw attention to it and still have it a nice, clean recommendation? Should we have a cover letter, or should we just say, here's our comments, or should we put a little like editor's note at the end of this, this is very critical, it is wrong?
Um, well, we also have the opportunity of attending their meeting when they're discussing this, and we can emphasize that we say this is really critical.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Should we flag it with, uh, you know, something to indicate its importance here, so we don't leave it out? I mean, I, I think when we made the code recommendations, we had varying degrees of, um, uh, strength of recommendation, right? That got to be kind of a mess after a while on the spreadsheet, but maybe there's something we could do here too to organize them.
Are we gonna say, no, uh, this is a critically needed change?
Or just critical error? Right? Change implies that they actually intentionally show it that way, I don't think anybody noticed it.
I say this is a mistake in the ETP picture.
Okay, I think if we, that's good, we can move on.
Leave it, Justin, yeah. Yeah, this is a critical.
All of it are serious problems, bike lane widths that don't work, uh, turning lane where you can't turn.
But for as much tension as we're paying to the bridge, if the DOT sees, well, look, they got all this room for a turning lane that doesn't go anywhere, what do we need to worry about a bike lane for? All right. Page 81. Remove recommendations. Move back. Quick question for you. Uh, the recommendation to remove back-end parking, was that something in the LWRP? Or is this just our own comment?
This, this is a recommendation in the, um, ATP to try back-end parking in front of the rec center. And since they added so much parking space behind the rec center, we didn't feel that it was necessary.
Well, maybe they, okay, we could, or we could have them use the back-end parking and remove the parking lot.
There we go. Yes, okay, I hear what you're saying. So maybe here, um, just add to that, remove recommendation for parking, back-end parking on Lincoln Ave. Uh, number four, maybe reference number four, so they don't have to look for it. And maybe reference the, um, community center. No longer required, or something like that.
Sure. I can just put, um, at the, at the Spiegel Center.
Yeah. Yeah, they call it the community center in the ATP. It doesn't really matter which.
Yeah, community center. The Lincoln Ave Community Center.
Yeah. Yeah, very good. All right. So now we're on to remove parking spots at Lincoln and South Main Street to remedy impaired visibility at the intersection. Lincoln and South Main.
Yeah, right, Joanne. I mean, you have to pull out.
Yeah. It's hard. It's hard to see. And I'm in a big car. Susan, you're in a little car. Can you see when you pull out of my street? No. If there's a car parked at the corner.
No, you have to nose out, and then you've got people who are, you know, coming, so it's a...
It's, it's, and you're trying to watch for pedestrians. It's not safe to have... I know they wanted extra parking spaces. And maybe it was even an attempt at traffic calming, but I don't think it's safe to have a space that close to the corner.
Right, right. In fact, I think, um, having spaces that, uh, but, uh, crosswalks. I, you know, how many times do you, do I go down South Street? And you really have to slow down because you have to look around the car at, at the crosswalk to see if someone is, you know, is beginning to cross.
You're talking about Sunday when all the people park there to go to church.
Right.
And somebody said that slows traffic. Well, it sure does if you're gonna bump into somebody.
Right.
Yeah, there's a, there's a fair point to, uh, parking density on the streets would certainly slow traffic. And, um...
But it also adds a danger. I mean, if you're trying to ride a bike in between a car that's parked next to a sidewalk and oncoming tra... I don't know how you do it. You can't.
Um, Justin, I wouldn't say sight difficulties. I would say, um, uh, hindrances or, uh, obstructions.
Okay.
Okay, well, again, they don't have, they can take it, um, or they don't have to. So everything's... Yeah, so they, good, moving on. Uh, let's see. Bike network recommendation.
I guess it should have roots in front of Roots 3164.
Yeah.
Would be a lot clearer.
I thought those are page numbers at first.
Okay. All right, I copied that. RTE wrote. No, we're gonna stick it in front of all of them.
Right.
That makes it abundantly clear. Sound okay to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so now we have Bike Boulevard 1, 2, 3, Bike Network Recommendations. I may have missed the conversation on this part. Um, develop a parking master plan for the Village Central Business District to reduce on-street parking and to create room for bike lanes. Well, is that suggesting more like parking lots?
Um...
Be sharing parking agreements.
Right.
Where do we have more room to have shared parking agreements?
Yeah, we don't really have room to build anymore parking. We don't want anyone to build more parking. So if we're removing parking spaces and want things to still work, the only option is to people share existing parking lots.
Or, you know, for, for people to, uh, there are a lot of parking spaces on side streets.
But wouldn't that still be on-street parking? So the way this, this recommendation reads is it's, it doesn't say "on-street parking on Main Street" or "on the major thoroughfares". It just says "on-street parking". And so are, are we instead saying, um, you know, consider reducing on-street parking requirements for the Central Business District with the goal to encourage on-street parking away from Main Street and State Street? Or, or something that's, to, to, to get bike lanes in those roads and you have to give up parking, but then it's gotta go on-street somewhere.
How, how about just take out that first recommendation and leave it with, "Develop a parking master plan"
Good.
to rationalize parking.
Yeah.
Okay, so what are we putting here?
We're eliminating.
Elimin- eliminate that, Justin, what you highlighted.
Yep.
Delete this one, page 81?
Yep.
We're gonna delete all of this?
Yep.
Yeah, because we, there's a better recommendation, right?
Right. It says it better than the next one down.
Yeah, and it leaves open the idea that the master plan is a separate group of people potentially putting their heads together to say, "What do we really want?"
Right.
And, you know, I know, Susan, you and I have talked in the past about how the parking requirements in the village are very restrictive for businesses outside of the Central District. But in the same vein, we wanna make sure that the Central District has enough parking, and, and somebody's gotta come together and, and figure this stuff out.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we remove all the byeline street parking, um, there's a lot of people that'd be pretty mad about that.
Yeah, so maybe there's enough space, but, I mean, I do enjoy periodically parking on-street on Main Street. I don't know why I ever would when I could walk, but it's happened.
It rains.
Many times, and on the side streets.
Yeah, yeah.
And there, I don't think there's ever been a time of day where I haven't been able to find a parking spot.
Right.
And I just wanna comment, it was a couple days ago, I was thinking, somebody had mentioned they were down to Chautauqua Institute. And then I was thinking about some of the, uh, beautiful villages that I've been to, and realized that when it's a really desirable village and location, I'm willing to walk. I don't need to park within 50 or 75 feet.
Right.
And, and so if you create that walking, active transportation environment, you don't need to have the parking right there.
Right.
Um, and you actually get potentially more density on the street when it feels safer for everybody to be there.
Oh, oh, good. Yep.
Agree, yes. People are used to walking and park out, but not here, apparently.
Yeah. Right? So, okay. I, I think we're moving. So I read through all of these, and they all looked good to me. A quick question on number seven for the page 84 stuff.
I know. Yeah.
Yes, but it's really not an action item. Like, I don't know how to...
Right, right.
Maybe that's, it, it's too open-ended where they wouldn't know what to do with it, so they would just strike it. So do we just strike it and hope everything else makes it safer?
What, which one are you talking about?
Number seven.
Number seven?
Yeah.
You wanna get rid of it?
Yep. Just seven, just seven.
All right, so we copy the rest of this. All right. So we have this, and you want me to strike number seven?
Yes.
Yep. And then the other point from me is number eight, where it says, "Access to the Erie Canal must be improved." I think we say enough of that to where we just maybe have a more direct statement with what comes next. So ensure bike lanes and boulevards are safe to get families to the canal path. Right? I don't think we need the first bit, even though it's true.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, if you wanna simplify it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, rather than, I, I just wanna make sure we're not continually trying to make the same point, and we just say, "These are the things you need to do." And keep in mind, this is on a map, by the way.
Right.
We have these, so, okay, let me, let me step back. One of the challenges to this whole section is, um, we're not telling, we're not making specific recommendations per se, as much as we're saying, these are our comments as to the map. And so to what extent do we wanna make a reference to that at the beginning? Right? And how could they easily take these, 1 through 10, and, and put them into the map with a, with a supplement? And, and I don't know right away.
I think that's on them. I think once they get their concepts, they'll figure out.
Okay, so then let's just leave it like it is. And, but maybe make a point, maybe make a reference on page 84. You know, Bike Boulevards, you know, recommendations for consideration, uh, to map improvements, something like that. Or recommendations for map improvement. I don't know. But, but this is the type of thing, Justin, like, uh, like, like you were saying before, I don't know what they're gonna do with something like this. They, they can't re, they can't go back and redo the map. Unless they pay for somebody to do it.
There are people that do that.
They could, or they could maybe insert a couple things like "The bike boulevards all connect. Here's how."
That read okay as an introductory sentence?
What? Yeah. Good.
Yep.
Okay, and then they can do what they want with it.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I also questioned several points on page 86, if they were likewise, you know, kind of too general.
Oh, yeah. I think similar to what we, to, we just did with the other map, we say, "These are our concerns about this map", and see what they do to address them. But I think at the end, what we're trying to do is make sure that when we do the final LWRP, that we don't surprise them with our findings.
So...
Right, I think they're getting an idea from this.
Yeah, I think so, too. But this isn't plug-and-play like some of our other stuff. This is gonna require them to say, "Do we do anything about it?", and what do we do?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so on page 85. Is that the one we're discussing right now?
Oh, no, we kinda skipped that one.
And, uh, actually, we're on 86, 1, and 2.
How about we, we do this one? Let me, um... Where'd my Word document go? Let me suggest a change here. First of all, whatever this is, needs to go. Um, major roads, I think need, need either buffered bike lanes or wide shoulders. Uh, well, I don't know. What do we do? I mean, if, if you make it 10 feet wide, then the shoulder's fine.
What if we just, what if we just stick to the NACTO guidelines?
I know. I, I think the last sentence is an editorial. So just let the guidelines that they already reference do the work.
Okay. Is this okay, then, or wide shoulders?
Sure.
Okay, move it away. So next, what are we on to?
Justin, just going back to the "or wide shoulders", I'd rather have a buffered bike lane than a wide shoulder, so why not just keep the wide shoulder out? If they're gonna do it, let's see if they do buffered bike lanes. And if not, then, then maybe they resort to a buffered bike, to a wide shoulder. But by putting in "or", it gives them an option that I'd rather have them choose the former.
Yeah, I would agree with you that buffered bike lanes are preferable to wide shoulders. And, um, the, I mean, I'm okay, it, it could be usable for a wide shoulder, but it's much clearer if it's, you know, clearly delineated.
Yeah, so maybe just like we have it there. I, I think that's good.
Okay. So next, we're on all of these. So let me just copy and paste, though. It sounds like there's a few changes to make.
I just think, take out the first two. I think they're just, what, too, too vague.
Yeah.
The rest are specific.
Right. So remove 1 and 2 and renumber the rest.
Before we remove 1 and 2, though...
Where do we address that?
Yeah, so before we remove those, uh, they are a little general, right? But it's general because they gotta come up with a solution. So these are our editorials on a map that they didn't specifically address connectivity to schools, nor address connectivity to the canal path. And wouldn't we wanna keep them in there to highlight the fact that the map fails to do that?
How about make connections?
Yeah, I mean, we kinda say that on the Bike Boulevard section, don't we, in, in, uh... But we can emphasize it here and...
So, Justin, on, on 3... So, Justin, on, on three, a path from Pittsford Plaza to the village, I mean, there are sidewalks the whole way, or you can take the Auburn Trail.
So, something that was interesting I just noted today is there's, there's the bicycle lane on Monroe Avenue disappears immediately before the bridge. Their shoulder. So, oh, I don't know what I want to, want to say here, but I should, let me find this picture.
Ah, yeah, that's weird. And just for those here, so follow along, page 85, what we just said before this page 86 thing, major roads need buffered bike lanes. Well, the bicycle facility recommendations on page 86 offer what's shared lane markings on South Main and Monroe coming into state, or coming into Four Corners. So there's a good chunk of the, the main drags through town that it suggests shared lane markings. And that's of course counter to our major roads need buffered bike lanes.
Yes.
Oh, it, it may be nice if the ATP was more aggressive eliminating the shared lane markings for the major thoroughfares in the village, because that's not safe.
Right, I agree.
I, I can understand it on Washington Road, right, coming out of the village, that's kind of narrow with that gritty in there already. I can understand it on French Road, because it's so darn narrow, but heck, a sidewalk on that road would be nice. Would I rather have a bike lane or a sidewalk on French?
Which, so there is to Nazareth, there's sidewalk?
French Road doesn't have much of a sidewalk, I don't think. I was walking on it the other night from, yeah, there's not much of, so, the French Road going west doesn't really have much of a sidewalk at all. After maybe the first hundred yards.
Going towards Nazareth?
Going towards Monroe.
There isn't any sidewalk, is there, Dave?
I didn't think so.
There's no sidewalk.
There's, there's a very little strip, like 50 yards of it, maybe. But it's, yeah, no, it was, it was a little disturbing. So I, I've recently walked French Road, and I've recently walked Gulf Ave at night, and neither one is particularly safe.
Okay, this is what blew my mind. This is approaching the Erie Canal Bridge.
Which, where, from where, Justin?
Monroe Avenue. So we're coming from Legman's into the village. And for the entire way, there is like a five-foot wide shoulder, except right before the bridge.
Yeah, it doesn't look safe.
So we talked before about having some markings for someone to get down to the Erie Canal. Well, they also are in dire need of a sidewalk there, or, so anyway, I was just pointing that out, because that was, that was pretty crazy.
They do reference that as a road diet candidate, that area on this map on page 86. But as soon, what's funny though is that, so that's a road diet candidate, right? And it's, I think the road diet would include a bike lane, right?
Hopefully.
Isn't that what the road diets entail?
Not, not sure.
Me either.
I think they, in, in the complete streets training that I went to, they talked about road diets, and then some people talked to them, referred to them as road buffets or something. It's not really just narrowing down the road. It's, it's actually a bunch of things like, you know, it could be sharrows or any of these other strategies that, that make it more usable for pedestrians.
Alright, and I'm reading this from the active transportation plan right now. And what it suggests is a road diet will convert the target four-lane roadway to two travel lanes in each direction with a center two-way left lane. In many cases, there's remaining road space that can be used for a shoulder or bicycle-type facility. So, at least, so Justin, still to your point, if they did the road diet up until that point, after that point, including the bridge, they show it as a shared roadway environment.
We can go on and on with, with challenges for bicyclists in the town.
Yeah. Well, I guess I just don't want the active transportation master plan to have shared bicycle lanes for Monroe Ave to State and South Main. I would rather have it be a dedicated bike lane than a shared bike lane. And right now, our point number, our point above this, page 85 point, says major roads need buffered bike lanes. So we should ask for them to have those, the map on page 86 to address the shared lane markings to be either bike boulevards, or, what would you call it, a dedicated bike lane, even if it's just striping.
I think a bike boulevard. I, I think that's a good point, Dave. You know, this might go to some negotiation strategies that, you know, if we ask for a sharro, you know, that's fun to say. So I, I guess that's one reason that people might want to ask for a sharro. But if you ask for a sharro, that's all you're ever gonna get. You probably won't get anything. But if you ask for a dedicated bike boulevard, maybe they'll give us a sharro.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think there's a single person in the village who wouldn't agree that that's what they want.
Right.
It's everybody going through the village. So why would we, why would we bend before we even ask, to your point, so?
Right.
So is this what we're asking for? I just created this number 10.
Yeah. Uh, yes, though, the only thing there, you might be asking, I even think you might be asking for a little too much on French Road, and for Washington, and for Mitchell. Right? If you can get, if you can get a shared lane striping there, that's fine. So for Mitchell, for Washington, for French, shared lane markings are fine, but for Main Street, State, and Monroe, it would be nice for those to be bike boulevards.
So is it Washington?
French.
Is it Washington Road or Ave? I get the two confused.
Washington Ave is the one that's perpendicular to Lincoln Ave? That's not the one you mean?
No, this is Washington.
Washington Road is the one that goes past Gulf Avenue.
Okay, I think that's the one.
Mitchell, French. Because again, on French Road, I'd rather have a sidewalk than a bike lane, so just share it, that's fine. And then Toby Road, I don't know Toby Road well enough. Between Macedon Center, where 64 is, and Macedon Center, there's that little Toby Road area there. That's probably fine for a shared bike lane too. I doubt you'll get that separately striped. My biggest concern for the, the Four Corners roads.
It's not in the village anyway.
People have been asking for a sidewalk, the Toby Road folks, for years.
The French Road folks have probably too, right?
Are they getting one? Isn't Toby Road getting a sidewalk?
I think it's on the books.
I think they're in. Some, I, I know one person on Toby Road, and she complained about it. Took up some of her yard, and she didn't like that.
So what are we talking about, main roads in the village?
Yeah.
Um, our,
Mitchell Road, not Mitchell Avenue.
Hey, kids, you guys going to bed?
Yeah, we have our game.
Yeah, I know, I can't play tonight, I'll play at this point. Say goodnight to everybody.
Goodnight, Gray.
Hi.
Goodnight, Emerson.
How cute.
It's our best played game ever. Look at the counters online, and look at Emerson's.
Alright, we'll see you in a bit. Alright, members of the public. It'd be more than an hour, I don't know.
Okay, um, can we finish this statement here, number 10?
Main roads may be the only option.
What do you want to do with the main roads in the village?
Is start it with more of a declarative. So instead of saying main roads in the village, say change or replace. Yeah, I would do replace. Replace shared, what's, how do they call them? It's page 86, right?
Yeah.
Alright, replace shared lane markings with bike boulevards. Change or replace, yeah. You probably just pick one of those verbs. And then capitalize shared bike lanes, put it to shared lane markings.
Right.
Yep, so just use their verbiage. So replace shared lane markings on main roads in the village with bike boulevards.
Yep.
And then capitalize bike boulevards, with dedicated bike boulevards, with bike boulevards being capitalized, and then just end the sentence. Skip the bike lanes.
No, yep.
Yep, and then I would even go so far as to get rid of change and just use the verb replace. Yeah, and then that allows it to agree with our prior point for page 85, which is all main roads should have dedicated bike lanes.
Okay, so is everyone good with number 10 as it is here?
Yeah, and I would even highlight, I'd highlight that and just put it in parentheses, that this is very important. Because if, if, if the board members have the ability to change this somewhat unilaterally without the town's input based on their discussions, then they should do so, and I don't see any reason why they would not.
Just a small little point, there's no number five, so the numbering's gonna be off.
Yep. And this, the numbering is simply for our editorial comments, it isn't necessarily in it. Yep.
Yeah, I'm reading the NACTO guidelines on their website now, and I, I think you're totally right about this, Dave. The, the shared lane markings should be where there's only a small speed difference between bicycles and the surrounding traffic. And that's not true on, on some of these roads, so we should definitely be shooting for a boulevard.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned, you know, so that would say actually down on Toby or French, it should probably be bike boulevards too, but specifically with French, I'd be concerned if we asked for it there, that we wouldn't get a a sidewalk. And I was trying to look in the ATP if they mentioned anything about sidewalks on French Road.
They, they say it is reasonable to have a sharro instead of a bike lane if there's not enough room. But if there is enough room, then there's no, it's not a substitute.
And a sharro is the shared lane?
Yep.
There's any, there's even a comment in the ATP that says French Road isn't safe for bikes, and that we suggest an alternate route. Well, if that's how we feel, maybe we should put a sign up. Like, when you're on Monroe and you're gonna turn left on French, there should be a sign, not safe for bicyclists.
Maybe we should just put a disclaimer on the front of the ATP that it's to favor pedestrian safety, except in areas where pedestrians shouldn't even try going at all.
Call it the actively target pedestrian plan.
Joanne, didn't, didn't a Nazareth student actually get killed on French Road?
I don't remember. I, I don't remember. Yeah.
Yeah, it was some years ago, but, yeah.
Okay. Alright, let's go back. We talked about that one. You said you wanted some, some kind of more declarative that this is important at the end.
I, I think it's, I think it's useful here, because if, if they pass the ATP with the shared lanes for the Four Corners there, we're never gonna get bike lanes. I highly doubt we're gonna steal back the right-hand turning lanes if we want them. I think you really have to hammer home on this with the DOT. I've never talked to them before, only getting guidance from you guys.
So, to really kind of figure things out, I mean, getting a good traffic consultant would be really helpful. I don't, I get the impression that people kind of make up the rules and requirements, rather than follow rules and requirements. But I don't really know how things work, and preferences and requirements get intermixed.
Well, wasn't it the LWRP that saved the trees on the canal for the town?
Yeah, but also required a lawsuit.
I know, but it gave.
Actually, it wasn't the LWRP, it was SIKR, it was an environmental review.
Is it expensive to file, or is it just expensive to defend?
I don't know. I mean, I think, I think sometimes you gotta pick a fight with someone, so that they actually start working with you, and, but that, that's just my opinion.
I see no reason why not. The LWRP and the ATP should be pretty firm with the DOT and say, you're not following the LWRP, let's go to court over this. Give us, give us your plan for the bridges, and if, it's not suitable, let's see how strong the LWRP is. And maybe they back down, maybe they don't, but are they really gonna go to court to defend not putting a bike lane?
Um, I think we have to wait until ARC retires.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that, but, but does that also?
He's retiring, he's retiring in a year, Susan.
From when?
I, I don't know, Bob just said he's retiring in a year, so maybe from now.
Wow.
I've heard it was the next month or two.
Wow.
But who knows?
Alright, moving on, sorry.
Okay, so is this thing, is this sentence needed? This highlighted, and?
Just, you know, what, you know, bolded, italicize it, you know, just make it stand out.
I would just say this is critical. I, I, I wouldn't necessarily even say to improve safety. I mean, just, this is critical to the ATP or to village objectives embedded in the ATP, just something. Don't narrow it by saying it being safety, just.
Okay, we'll leave it as that, they get the idea.
Yeah.
Okay, the other two I amended were number one and two.
I like it.
Yeah, it's good.
Yep, good.
We could add that basically this, we could say that this is mandated by the LWRP.
Uh, yes.
Or not mention it, but it's enough, it's clear enough that it is.
Uh, you could even start that sentence, you know, per LWRP policy.
Right.
Policies. Or guidelines, or whatever you want to put.
Policies, good.
Policies, yeah. It's a little stronger.
Yeah.
And I don't even think you have to say adjacent neighborhoods, because what if it's somebody biking in from Hen- And I don't even think you have to say adjacent neighborhoods, because what if it's somebody biking in from Henrietta and just put it to improve access?
Well, I think it's specifically mentioned to improve access to adjacent neighborhoods, but yeah, whatever. What, how do we want to word this? Make connections to the Erie Canal path to improve access? Just period?
Either one works for me, I don't care. Yeah, you're drawing on more insight from the past than me, so.
I said keep it as it is.
Okay.
All right, that's, all right, that's fine. Any of these others, are there any others that need?
The also after number three where you got that underlined, either put a comma after it or have it be its own number. Or you can just do a path from Pittsford Plaza to the Village and from Pittsford Plaza to Nazareth is needed.
Yeah.
It's a different to Village and?
Nazareth? Yeah, now what, what type of path? Walk path, bike path, doesn't matter path?
Yeah, that was my question.
Psychopath.
Pickle path. Did you say pickapath or pickle path?
Psychopath.
Psycho path.
So there is a sidewalk, and I believe there is a bicycle lane on the shoulder, except for...
Why we want to have a... Is this referencing the boulevard? This is still page 86, right? The boulevards? So maybe what we're trying to say in these comments is have a dedicated path, bike path, connecting those two. And right now, we don't have that. Is that right? Plan trails, trails, conceptual trails, bike boulevards, shared lane, bike over, no. No diet. No recommended improvements. Okay. So this is, I think we are referencing here too, that they weren't making any improvements to East Avenue coming from St. John Fisher, and there was no improvements from Nazareth besides what's already there. So the question there is, would a bicyclist coming from St. John Fisher, Nazareth be on the road with a road diet, or would they be on the sidewalks? And I think our comment there was trying to encourage them to change the East Ave recommendation from no improvement to at, at a minimum of road diet candidate. I think that's what we were considering there. Do you guys remember that?
Oh, we were talking about possibly having, improving the stuff in the Northwest Quadrant and the with that other trail, the Auburn Trail, and going that way over towards Pittsford Plaza as an option.
Yeah. Well, if you're not gonna go on French Road because you didn't fix it up, you better go get there somewhere else.
So French Road has no sidewalks and no bike lanes, correct?
French Road has neither. And East Ave only has sidewalks but no bike lanes. And right now, they're not recommending any improvement on East Avenue. And this is where we might be encroaching a little bit on the town, because the town might say, "Well, we got other focuses, so let's not, you know, do anything there." We don't know that. But shouldn't the plan be kind of, I don't know, I just feel like a lot of that traffic could come through the village, and so why not try to encourage more bike lanes on East Ave and, and put our thoughts in here?
They should have done is made nice wide sidewalk going down 96 that could accommodate both, but that would have been nice. So, and how is this? I just added a few, the notes you made. So a path from Pittsford Plaza to the Village and a path from Pittsford Plaza to Nazareth College is needed.
What were you gonna say, Susan?
Just the East Avenue, you know, they just redid.
Yeah.
They, they took out a lane. You know, and added and just had a center turning lane. So I don't think they're gonna be in the mood to listen to, you know, East Avenue recommendations at this point, and there is a sidewalk.
So that's like East Avenue, we're talking about 96 getting there.
Oh, no, there they do suggest a road diet candidate.
But there is a sidewalk from Pittsford Plaza to the Village.
Yeah.
On one side of Monroe Avenue.
Right, so that's something.
Not on the other side, it just ends. At French Road, I believe it ends, and then there's no sidewalk from French Road to the Erie Canal.
Yep.
So you can get to Wegmans, but you can't get back.
You just go on the same sidewalk.
How Wegmans wants it.
I think we can leave this as, as is. I mean, it gets our point across. Maybe there's a couple of things in there they'll weed out and find of, of their liking. But again, I, I think sometimes here with these maps, they're gonna gloss over this stuff probably more than we do in the interest of not updating it. Regrettably.
Okay, is this okay for number three?
So why say Route 96? What road is that?
That's East Avenue. Part of East Avenue.
Yeah, so when I was saying East Ave, I was thinking from St. John Fisher into the city or into the village, not East Ave running east-south on 96. Yeah, St. John Fisher and the Village.
Okay.
Anyway.
You wanna say neither sidewalks nor bike lanes?
I do have sidewalks now.
Oh, just in the previous.
I, I think what I'm trying to do here is say, in this plan. We, there's a lot of. Bike lanes. So the East Ave comment, just to come back to that, East Ave between St. John Fisher and the Village should include recommendations for bike lanes, or, or, you know, we recommend bike lanes between East Ave and St. John Fisher, something like that. Because again, I know they have a sidewalk, but if I'm a college kid and I'm going to St. John Fisher and I want to live in the village, right now, I have to bike on a sidewalk or I have to bike on a road without a bike lane. I'd rather bike on a road with a bike lane if I'm ever gonna do that.
Right.
And, and I'm not saying that it's gonna happen quick, but over time, this document could take 10 years or more, and it would, sure would be nice. And the other thing too, this is just long-term planning. If this document's gonna be on our records for 20 years, in the next 20 years, we're gonna have cars driving themselves. And when cars are driving themselves, bicyclists are gonna feel safer. I think I would. But importantly, you're gonna need striping for that, and you're gonna need bike lane striping for that. And that's why I think it's really critical to get right here.
Another area that, yeah, I agree with you on that. Another one that I was looking at was Route 65, which goes to Mendon Pond's Park, and happens to go right past the Erie Canal and one of the parks there. And I looked at it, and I'm like, this is nuts. People have, if they wanna go for a bike ride with their kids, and they live three doors down from the park, they gotta go put their bikes in their car, go drive to the park, quarter mile, take their bikes out, and then go for a ride. That just doesn't make any sense. So, but I think that's mostly true of a lot of the roads in the town, is they have fairly narrow shoulders on most of them. You're, they're not a place you'd wanna take with your family. Fearless Riders would, would do it, but that's about it.
Well, in, in many respects, regrettably, so many of the high residential areas within the town were built with the crazy roads that go nowhere concepts, so most of the kids bike in these roads that go nowhere, and they don't feel the necessity to bike on main roads to actually get places. I don't know if that's true. I feel like that might be true.
Well, how do you get, oh, that's right, if you, you just ask your parents to bring you somewhere in their car.
Yeah, yeah, you got these like little desert communities that have one access point and 50 roads inside that look like a spaghetti mess, which I got lost on two of those, by the way, trying to get to Genesee Country Village.
Um, I'm gonna run out of battery soon. Can we?
My computer's not, but I am.
Okay. We're good there.
I just.
Move on from this one?
Yeah.
We've, we're almost done with this document.
Yeah.
I didn't really have anything until the 92.
Woodland Drive is Woodland Road, I believe. The third 87 down.
Right.
It is. Yep. That's confirmed.
So, what's the change here?
Page 80, on the page 87, mark the route, the second sentence, the route along Woodland Drive should change to Woodland Road.
Okay.
Woodland Road. The shoulder.
With it, I think it ends right, does it end right by 3750 Monroe, or is it French Road?
What do you mean the shoulder has gaps?
Shoulder is gone. Or sorry, the shoulder, or there is no shoulder. No shoulder or sidewalk.
That's, yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's good.
Okay.
And, so then, Justin, you had something at 92?
Yeah, if we're going down there, I don't know if anybody else has.
He's 92, okay. I don't have any comments on those letters.
Yeah, I was all set.
Okay, scroll down.
Sure. Yeah, other than the, the straight characters, I, I think this is a really great point. I, I read through that section about emergency services, and I, I think that we should specify what some of the problems are. The, the fire department has said, "Well, we can't do certain things because their equipment is too big," but I don't think that any, there's a very, very small amount of citizens, if any, who know that they can go to the fire department and complain about the huge fire trucks they're buying. And I, I think that, you know, it's, it's a political issue. I, I think a lot of the elected officials aren't gonna wanna bring that up. But I, I think that you need to bring awareness to that kind of issue in, in a document like this, that that stands in the way of, of making walkability improvements. The other thing they can do is that they say, "Well, you know, we can actually achieve both goals, pedestrian friendliness and having efficient emergency responses." But I, I think the point can also be made that if you make the, the village more walkable, then you need to respond to fewer incidents. And they don't, they don't really make that point quite forcefully enough, but I, I think, you know, you're, you're totally right. They need to bring up the, the issue of size of equipment and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So how should this be changed?
I, I guess I'm, maybe just in the first sentence, specify the concerns of emergency services and how choices of, and how choice of equipment is related to pedestrian improvements. Something like that, you know, and.
What if we left out choice of equipment and just said, and how they relate to pedestrian improvements?
Sure.
And how equipment relates?
Just put how they relate. So instead of choice of equipment, leave it more open ended.
Yeah.
Because, because they're gonna have concerns about speed, they're gonna have concerns about traffic patterns, they're gonna have concerns. Because if we take four corners and bring it down to one lane, they're gonna have a concern about that. Right? If we put bike lanes everywhere, they're gonna have concerns about that. So I, I would just say concerns of emergency services and how they relate instead of related to pedestrian improvements.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately. Sorry.
Why, why not say the fire department?
Well, it's not just the fire department, it's also ambulances.
Is it?
So the ambulances don't like speed bumps while they're giving CPR to somebody. I would, I sort of have a point, but I'd also say, how many times is an ambulance driving down my street, only to hopefully service people on my street?
Well, if pedestrians are more active, then they would need to have CPR less often, potentially.
Oh, you're stretching, Justin.
That's a, that's a correlation, yeah.
Yeah. I think I would leave it at that and get rid of that A with the till day type E thing over. It's not a till day, I don't know, accent part.
I don't know, there, there are always some mysteries with cut and paste.
Yeah, well, it's when you go from Google to Word to anything else.
Yeah, it's hard. That's, that's why I like to have Microsoft Word as. Yeah, it's hard. That's, that's why I like to have Microsoft Word as the, well, if you have the same person with the same software, it works. Uh, I've never found Open Office to be able to edit Word documents properly and screw things up and Google's its own thing, so going between them all stinks.
Yeah. I'm okay keeping page 93 comment about the three Es. I doubt they'll keep it, but sure. At least we made a point.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe the quotation mark can go away, but that's okay.
Talking about, um, oh, nevermind, nevermind, other for, sorry.
Okay, so it sounds like we're done with this document. Fantastic.
Very good.
So, I will, Susan, I will email this to you right now.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sure you will not be working on it tonight.
No, probably not, probably not. But first thing in the morning.
Justin, I like to have, I just want to ask you a question. You had sent that link to some really great work that you had done referencing all the different policies within the LWRP.
That was, that was mostly Justin's list of notes.
Okay. Do we want to forward that on with just sort of a subheading? Additional conversational notes and elements to consider? Or do we want to leave that internal? I mean, not that it's not public, but.
Well, right now, it's not been shared with anybody. It's in draft form, um, it hasn't been published.
Do we want to have the trustees see that before tomorrow night, or do you think that what we're putting in front of them right here is sufficient for our initial response?
I think either we send it or, or we have another meeting to discuss it. I don't know if everyone's read it yet and how many comments people had. It, basically, it was notes from our discussion in our, our meeting.
Are you talking about the, uh, the, um, bicycle lane recommendation?
No, the other document, the one on the LWRP.
Oh, oh, then I think we, that, that should wait, right?
I think we're, another meeting to discuss it, it would be beneficial, I think.
All right.
So, the question that I have, um, just in terms of getting this document to the board before tomorrow night. To what end, when we forward this document, would we be, um, would they think that this is the, the depth of our discussion and might they have a discussion about the ATP independent from our LWRP notes? Or do you think that this is, um, sufficient for just the ATP? And then we delay the LWRP additional comments until we review those a week from now or so?
Well, our public hearing is a week from now. Okay. Um, all right, whoops, my email, but, uh, anyway. Um, so Susan, I already sent you the document.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else wants a copy, let me know. Um, if we want to review the other documents together, then we should review the other documents together. And if we have a public hearing for Monday, um, I think it makes sense to try to get these out there beforehand.
To get which, to get which these out, out where?
Okay, well, I think the ATP notes, it sounds like as soon as you revise those, they're ready to go out. So, those will definitely go out. So, the other two documents are LWRP notes. And then there is those, that bicycle lane with document. And I, I don't know what anyone wants to do with the bicycle lane with document. It was, um, I just sent that out before the meeting and it was kind of summary of a whole bunch of code and requirements to try to figure out what I thought they should be and what code says about it. Um, my basic concern is I think there's a lack of interest in actually making the, um, bicycle lane system usable and safe for average users. And it, my concern is just it's being said as, hey, we worked on this rather than we made it functional. So, um, I don't say the point in a plan if it doesn't actually make a functional system. And there are some improvements, but I just really think people could aim higher. So, I guess the question is, do you want to have a meeting on, say, Friday?
I can't, but welcome to proceed, um, campaign in the Adirondacks.
Okay, and, uh, I think, yeah, it would be the soonest we could have it. So, if we can't make it, then I guess we'll have to wait till Monday.
Well, you guys can proceed if you feel fun. The other thing that we could do, and this is, this was, I've read through that, those notes. And, um, I think those notes carried in a lot of our conversation pretty cleanly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't think between the five of us, there's a lot of disagreement. And to me, I think what we don't want to do is surprise the board per se, nor necessarily, you know, delay getting the information to them if there's things that they can constructively move forward on in advance. I don't necessarily think we have to wait for the public hearing until we release those notes. Is there any benefit to us reviewing these notes offline? And just saying if there's any additional comment to add and then getting them in the hands of the trustees sooner and not necessarily going through them line by line, because this isn't actual code that's going to get written. It's just our notes and our comments and our thoughts.
You're talking about the LWRP notes, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that link that Justin Lake gave sent on our chat.
But if we could do is say, this is a document in progress, this is the current draft of it, and it's subject to revision.
I kind of like that approach better, so the trustees have something to think about sooner rather than later. And it, it kind of goes to Justin Lake's comment, like, basically countering my point last week when I was thinking kind of delay and hold it. And this is sort of, hey, here's our first draft, we're continuing to revise this, but this is where we are right now.
It's the software philosophy of releasing early and releasing often. Let's, uh, shoot it out there.
Yeah, well, that goes along with, um, an initial release that's buggy and doesn't work.
It may be, but we're not going to find out until we run it.
Right. But I, I, I guess I'm of the mindset to try to let the trustees, maybe they already do, because you guys have had some conversation, I don't know. But to, to let them know that we have some serious concerns about, you know, the points. And if we, if we take these notes of the LWRP and we combine them with what we're about to send them here, um, specifically those comments about connectivity to the canal, they're gonna see more of that depth of character in terms of how we arrived at why that's so important in these notes. And if you give it to them separately, it, it doesn't really carry the same degree of weight, I don't think.
That's a good point.
Um, I don't have a problem sharing it with them and say that, um, we're still working on the document.
Uh, so, um, how is this different than our findings?
We haven't written them yet. This is our just initial notes and comments. Then they can, if we, we have a public hearing, if someone wants to say something or say, we really think these are off mark or we really can't do this because it's not practical for this reason or that. Yeah, you know, they, they can always explain why it is the way it is and that goes a long way sometimes.
Right. So, my only concern is that, uh, we have been operating in a, in a workshop. And these are very specific LWRP recommendations and should have that, should that have been conducted in a open meeting, a public meeting?
It has been. And you want to.
These are, I, I would consider this like a draft of meeting minutes, you know, we, we haven't even approved them yet, but.
Right. I mean, this LWRP was never on an agenda.
It's been on every agenda.
Yeah, a workshop, the workshop.
And a workshop and a meeting is the same thing.
It just says ATP. I think. If it, uh, I thought it just said ATP.
Oh.
Hope I'm.
Uh, let's see. Tonight's agenda is the ATP. Which is all we've done.
It just says review of the active transportation plan. And that is a review, is the LWRP review.
Yeah.
Do the ATP.
I mean, we're not making decisions based on the LWRP. We're using that as a set of conditions by which to review the ATP. You know, the, the public hearing is still, uh, going to explicitly be about the LWRP, so I think if, I, I don't feel like it's too much of a stretch since there are no decisions rendered for us to prepare for a review of that document.
Yeah, well, here's how I, I see it, is we, uh, have meetings. Um, they're open. We had Renee attend one and we gave her ample opportunity to talk about some background behind things and some of her thoughts. She asked, hey, do we have any questions or comments? And then we said, no, not at this time, we're listening right now, we're still going through it. Now we have comments and we send them along. Uh, so if, normally with an applicant, we'd share all these kind of things forthright in a meeting, but it's kind of difficult at times.
Hmm. Okay.
So, I see Susan's point. She's saying that it was really, LWRP was really never published as what we were doing. Even though it was, that's what we were, I mean, what else would we be doing with the ATP? We're reviewing it. For the LWRP, but we really never said that. So, is that going to be a problem?
I, question for you. Let's say there's a proposal that comes up for a, a development and we're reviewing the development. On the night that we review the LWRP as part of that development, do we have to say that's part of the review that we're doing at that time, or do we just simply say we continue to review the development?
If you're doing an LWRP consistency review, then you, then that needs, that needs to be noticed.
Yes.
Okay. It's, uh, it is noticed for our next meeting.
Right, right. So, I'm just asking, do we want to have all these notes go out, um, before, before the LWRP?
If it's noticed.
If, if you guys are okay with that, want to give the trustees, uh, heads up. I'm, I'm kind of.
I, I don't know enough of the policy to, to feel strongly, so if, if any one person's concerned, I would default to that one concern personally. So.
I mean, that makes sense. If someone is reluctant to put it out there, then we should probably just agree not to put it out there.
Yeah.
So, if someone is reluctant to put it out there.
Well, it sounds like Susan is, you know, she's, I'm, I'm not a lawyer and, and, uh, so, since we don't have an attorney here, I think that if there's some question, it would be a more con, uh, more conservative approach to keep those notes to ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what? Um, uh, I know a lawyer. We could give Mindy just a, a quick call tomorrow.
Well, at the end of the day, just to step back, so at the end of the day, right, this is, the entirety of all of our meetings are public. So, everything that we've ever done as part of the ATP and the LWRP and trying to go back and forth and see it all fits together, all of that's public. We have notes pertaining to that. It's just a question of whether or not the release gives it some degree of, um, weight differently than the discussion itself. And I, one argument would be it does, another argument would say it doesn't. Um, again, I don't think we need to decide if there's any concern. It sounds like there's enough of it. I would just say, let's not. Let's send forward the ATP comments that we have here, wait for Monday. And then proceed from there.
I mean, if they read these notes and, and, you know, read, um, you know, the page 11 where we talk about the LWRP very specifically, um, you know, and it's mentioned in a couple other areas. Um, I think they'll get the drift. Um, and the, the other thing is, you know, our, um, our hearing, uh, starts next week, right?
Yep.
When, and that's when the 60-day, uh, um, window opens, is that right?
A 60-day window started, I think, in, uh, whenever they forwarded it to us. Um, was that early July?
Yeah, I think it's mid-July even.
Might have been late June. Oh, no, it might have been July, that's right, because they, it may have been mid-July, because we started talking about it before they did the referral, and I think it may have been.
17th, we got the email from Linda.
Yeah, July 17th. So, all we need to do is respond to them within the 60-day period of time. It does, we don't actually have to do the LWRP review. We just have to respond to them, right?
Well, we did that before and that didn't go so well.
Okay.
So, if you guys want to, uh, send along the notes, um.
14th of July.
Right.
Yeah. I say let's not. I don't think there's necessarily a reason within a one-week period of time that we're going to give them so much additional opportunity for discussion, that my comments, I'll rescind and let's just wait a week.
Yeah, I don't think it's a huge deal.
You know, there's nothing that, you know, precludes any of us, you know, to giving, you know, Renee or someone a heads up um, about the LWRP.
Yeah. We're gonna have a full discussion. I suspect, will there be at least one board member present next Monday night for our meeting?
Who knows?
Who knows?
Okay. Well, maybe we should invite, um, them.
So, I told Renee and Bob earlier today that, um, we're working on notes for, of, um, ATP notes and, um, LWRP notes to send along so that they could look at them on Tuesday and we're having a public hearing, uh, the following week. So, if we send something along, that's great. Um, ideally, we send it all along, but we want to make sure it's good first. So, I mean, maybe what we should do is carry this offline and, um, someone could talk to Mindy in the morning. Susan, do you want to talk to Mindy in the morning?
Sure.
If, if our only objection is legal and I, that's the only objection that I can see, I, I don't, you know, this is basically what we talked about at the meetings. Um, you know, maybe we could say conditionally upon Mindy's, uh, approval, this isn't going to cause issues, we forward it along or something.
So, so we'll forward it along, state it's a draft document, um, where, you know, if they, someone wants to address it, we will revise things.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. If Mindy says it's fine. And, yeah, I'm good, either way. I'll defer to you guys. And so, Susan, you're gonna talk to Mindy and just see if it's okay, if there's any reservation and we'll go whatever direction she might suggest?
Yeah, I'm going to ask her if some preliminary notes, uh, you know what, I can hear Mindy. Why, why send something that's preliminary and you might change it?
Probably.
Well, I think my answer is because we're in the middle of a pandemic and we don't have applicants in front of us to directly talk to.
No, but the question is the notes can be, we may make changes, so why send out something that?
I sent it before. And that's where, to your point, Susan, I don't think a week is going to change a whole lot between what the board does between now and then. They know we have our, um, public hearing next week.
Right.
Yeah. We're moving forward, which is better than they've done for the last three years, so.
Okay, so it sounds like, uh, Susan, you talked to Mindy anyway, but it sounds like right now the plan is to, um, keep these notes internal and we'll, we'll discuss it at our meeting next week. and we'll, we'll discuss it at our meeting next week.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, I'm, I'm much happier with that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Let's not even ask Mindy then.
Okay.
Yep, sounds fine.
Okay.
All right, well, if that's it, I think that's, I think we're done for tonight, finally. It's been a long meeting, but we, we got some, something accomplished, so that's good. We got our first notes released out and it's better for the process.
Yeah. Yeah, that was really, really good, really, really good.
I know, we're getting more fast, but we usually get things done pretty well, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, I'll second that.
Hi.
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 All right, let's look record show, there's a unanimous motion to adjourn at 9:00 PM.
Okey-dokey.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next Monday.